Please be mindful of conduct during our discussions. And please avoid personal references to each other or other people, and in this case, I'm referring to previous board members. Let's just discuss our agenda without disparaging others, including previous board members. And with that, I will also want to remind board members and also people who are listening to us and watching us, March, the entire month of March is voting for RA elections. So please, please, please make sure you vote. Tell your friends, neighbors, contacts, network, everybody, please vote. We need your vote. We've got two great candidates, and we need them on the board. With that in mind.
Do you mind? Can we remind our members that in fact, if we don't get enough voting members, then the election will not be valid? And dealing with that situation would probably cost the association some money. So it's another way, even though the candidates are unopposed for their seats, voting is very important to the operations of the association. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We need Quarr. So we need your help to get everybody to get out of bed. Thank you. With that, we are now on item B.
I move to amend the agenda to place new item J, which would be the budget calendar to amend my draft that I provided in the draft in the last board meeting to reflect adding a second review of member comments for July 10th. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Motion has been seconded. Any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye. Director Farrell, can you hear me? You're mute. Okay. Director Farrell, did I see you vote yet? Okay, thank you. And I assume Director Farrell is yea.
I would offer the negatives and the abstains.
I will, I will. Are those opposed? Abstaining. Director Farrell is abstaining, yeah. No problem. Oh, so that would be eight, zero, one, and the motion passes. So that was on your amendment. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? That seems to be unanimous. Oh, sorry, I gotta complete this. Abstaining. Okay, so we've got nine, zero. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are now on item C, and that is member comments. Brittany, do we have any member comments?
We have Matt Mullenix, who'd like to make a member comment.
Okay, so Mullenix, you know the drill. State your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you very much. Matthew Mullenix, 11056 Brushford Road.
Just get a bit closer to the microphone.
All right, good evening, board members, RA staff, and fellow community members in the room.
I think we need to check the microphone, please.
We are.
Moving really close.
All right, how about now? All right, great. Good evening, board members, RA staff, and fellow community members in the room, and those watching at home. I'm Matthew Mullenix. I'm a candidate for the at-large seat in the ongoing RA board election. I want to take a moment to thank the board, the management team, and the staff for their efforts to encourage voter participation, as we just heard. Your work to get the word out through signage, community outreach, and mobilizing volunteers is critical to ensuring a strong and engaged membership. This election comes at an important time for Reston, as we face key issues like ongoing development pressures, open space preservation, rising costs, aging infrastructure, and member engagement. These are challenges we must tackle together, and that starts with strong voter participation. I want to take this moment to remind all members that voting is currently open and runs through the end of the month, March 31st. If you're watching tonight, please take a few minutes to vote. Encourage your friends, family, neighbors to do the same. Send up smoke signals if you have to. Strong participation strengthens our community and helps ensure that members' voices are heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else, Brittany?
Next, we have Sareka, but she'd like to make her comments during the volunteer interviews.
Okay. I think we've got one more.
We have one from the crowd. Hello, I'm Eric Goplarud, 1606 North Village Road in Reston. And I'm a member of the Environmental Advisory Council, also a member of Fairfax Environmental Quality Advisory Council, or EQAC. And I'm here to talk very briefly about a really big concern, which RA, or the Reston Association leadership was only briefed on yesterday by Walter Alcorn, which is that Dominion is clearcutting and is planning to clearcut not only from Vienna to Reston, but probably all the way out nearly to Leesburg, cutting down all of the trees without a commitment at this point for doing anything about what's going to happen to the disturbed land.
I'm sorry, is this along the WNOD trail?
This is the WNOD trail, clearcutting the right-of-way. And as I understand from talking to Alcorn's staff, they're planning to clearcut all the way on both sides of the right-of-way, which abuts to Reston Association land, certainly abuts to a lot of homeowners, and is definitely a concern that this leaves an open corridor for invasive species, for, you know, just a mess that's being left behind. And so this seems to me to be an issue that the RA board and RA needs to be involved with. Clearly, the Board of Supervisors, Jeff McKay, has sent a letter to Dominion. The Nova Parks has sent a letter. Walter Alcorn has sent a letter. The Friends of the WNOD have sent a letter to Dominion. We know that Dominion is not the most sensitive monopoly that we have. And having RA getting engaged on this, I think, is an important concern. So I'm sharing just some photographs that were from the Fairfax Now article of what was the clearcutting in Vienna. We're next.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other people in the audience who'd like to make a member comment?
Mr. President, can you hear me now?
I can, yes. Thank you.
I apologize.
No worries. Thank you.
Is it appropriate for us to comment at all on that at this time? I would like to, Your Honor, Mr. President, because.
I'm not a judge.
Sorry, sorry. My old habits die hard.
No worries, no worries, no worries. I would rather wait until we get to the CEO update, because we can also brief you on our meeting with Supervisor Alcorn. It happened yesterday, and the same topic came up. So if you hold your comments, we can have a conversation then.
Owen, are you good with the meeting minutes for consent calendar? Are you good with the meeting minutes? Okay. Mr. President, I move to adopt the consent calendar as listed.
Second.
Okay, motion has been seconded. Discussion, yes.
Can we add to the consent calendar the minutes from last meeting that Brittany circulated, or is that out of order and we have to wait till next time?
You can do it.
The special meeting minutes. She circulated them to us.
You could add it, or I think you could add it.
Okay, and I'd like to amend the consent calendar and add the minutes from Monday's meeting, March 10th, 2025.
Second that.
Mr. President.
Director Farrell.
If the minutes could reflect that I was, had an excused absence.
Yeah.
I could, I could agree to that consent.
No problem, yeah. I don't think there's any objections to that. Will do.
So we need a vote on the amendment?
Yep, so we have an.
I just have a minor comment with regard to the minutes of the 27th, in which there were, was a repetition of a portion of the sentence in which section was that?
IMH.
IMH. And the repetitious section would be eliminated from the minute. And I've put that, I told Brittany which one it is.
Any objections to that?
No.
Okay.
So we need a vote on the amendment?
We need a vote on the amendment to include this, the minutes of the special meeting that happened on Monday. I need a second for that. Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Director Farrell, I don't see you, but I can.
I vote aye.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you.
And now we need a vote on the consent calendar.
We need to vote on the consent calendar, yeah. Was there a second for that?
There was.
He was, yeah.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion on the consent calendar say aye.
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 Thank you, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay. I believe at this point we are ready for volunteer interviews. I believe we have two?
That is correct. I do not see.
Mr. Britt is here.
Mr. Britt's here. I think they're both in the room. But I'd like to ask Sareka to unmute so she can make a comment.
She's on one.
Yes. Sareka, you're unmuted.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Evening, everyone. This is Sareka. I am kind of wearing two hats tonight. I want to comment in support of both the volunteer applicants that you have tonight. First, as the Chair of the Environmental Advisory Committee, I really appreciate Jeanette, her interest in joining our committee. Her scientific and education background is just very, very impressive. And I mean, it's no easy feat, teaching at all, let alone middle school and high schoolers. So, but she has this, gained this unique ability to be able to communicate concepts to an audience in a way that they're able to understand this. And that's something that the scientific community don't necessarily always possess a skill. So I think she would be a great asset to our committee, and I welcome working with her as an additional new member. And now, as Vice Chair of the Lakes Equity Working Group, I wanted to thank Doug Britt for his application to represent the Lake Newport Committee, and for volunteering more of his time to all things Reston and RA-related. As you all know, Doug's a longtime Reston resident, and he's also been heavily involved with various activities, including the board and committees. And he will bring a wealth of knowledge to our working group, so I just wanted to also support his application to our working group, and I hope you share the same thoughts as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay.
First interview was Doug Britt?
Yep. Mr. Britt, thanks for being here, and thanks for volunteering again.
Thank you. Yeah, Doug Britt, 1569 Harper's Cove Lane, Reston, Virginia. Thank you. I look forward to always keeping my foot in anything lakes and ponds in Reston. So I am a longtime resident. I've been here 50 years this year. Started back as a limnologist, as a freshwater ecologist. So I gravitated to this area to live when my family moved here. I was, I started a company back in the 70s, and one of my first contracts was with your predecessor, the Reston Homeowners Association, where I managed the fisheries in the four, three of the four lakes, and had contracts to deal with aquatic vegetation removal, hydrilla at that time. I've been a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee now for nine years, so my time is up in June. I can no longer serve there. So I'll get a few more months on the Lakes Equity Working Group. I look forward to doing that.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Britt?
Go ahead.
I really don't have any questions. I've worked with Doug for many years.
Get a bit closer to the mic. Thank you.
I really don't have any questions. I've worked with Doug for many years on the EAC. I also timed out, and a couple of years before he did. And I have been working with the Lakes Equity Working Group, and I think that he will make a substantial contribution to the efforts of the group, and so I endorse his appointment by the board.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else? Again, really appreciate your volunteering and being such a longtime Restonian here. There's a lot to be gained there. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Next, we have Shirley Thomas.
Hello, I go by Jeanette, my middle name. Thank you for considering my candidacy. I too am a 50-year resident, a little more than 50 years, here in Reston. I am an recently retired environmental educator. I've worked at Langston Hughes. I'm very involved in environmental stewardship through organizations like Climate Reality, and I'm currently teaching for OSHA Life Well Learning Institute, an affiliation of George Bayes University, teaching climate change classes. And my passion is getting the community involved in environmental stewardship, not just being a steward myself, but bringing in the community to share the mission. And I think that maybe working at the, with the great people at EOC, and boy, I'm not filling any of those shoes, I'm just a whole new thing, would be a great opportunity to do that.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions? Please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Ms. Thomas?
I'm sorry.
Just a matter of.
You can't get off that easy.
Sorry. Just a matter of curiosity, because my children attended Langston Hughes Middle School.
I wondered if one of you, I might have taught your kids.
And so I'm curious, what year you started there?
Let's see, 17 years, 18 years. So, and before that, I worked for U.S. Geological Survey. I do have a degree in geology, and I've worked for a number of think tanks and strategic consulting firms in DC before I went into teaching. So.
So I'll have to do the math, yeah.
Maybe '03?
I think that you probably.
Maybe '03 or '04. I may indeed have taught some of your children.
Well, glad to have you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Margaret. Director Barry.
If we could call her back.
I told you, you can't get off that easy.
Unfortunately for you all, we're very familiar with Mr. Britt, so there were less questions.
I noticed in your application, you mentioned that you were familiar, obviously, with RA and the board, and some of the things we can and cannot do, which often comes up. And I was just curious, you know, are there things that you've heard people have concerns about that you know are not RA pieces versus things that are?
No, but environmental stewardship by nature is, you know, you're part of an interconnected system, and it's going to be very important to understand what Reston can control and what Reston can't control. You can't let the mission creep into places that we have no control over. And I think it's important that we leverage the resources that we have, but not spend a lot of time spinning our wheels, trying to do things that are not our mission. Having said that, I am very much an idealist, and I believe in collaborating with other organizations and leveraging the power of inter-jurisdictional organizations.
Thank you.
Are you sure?
Director Flasch.
You want to disappear that quickly?
Did you have something?
Yes, I do, but I don't need her to be there.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to endorse her as well. And the reason for that is I have reviewed her resume as was submitted, and it is impressive. And it brings several added elements to the EAC, which will benefit highly from those. And she has attended EAC meetings and has made contributions even before she's a member, and so I highly endorse her appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you for, both of you, for being here. Obviously, we'll go into executive session, and obviously, when we finish, we'll let you know. Thanks again. At this point, we're moving to item F. So this is related to Friends of Southgate and Kathy Hutchins Community Center. This is the MOA. Just to give you a little background, and I'll hand it over to Peter to speak as well. We received a note from the county about renewing this MOU that existed before. I was able to engage staff, talking to Peter and others. So we engaged with county about the MOU, what the changes are and so on. We also consulted with our council, Mr. Champ. There were some changes that went back and forth. At this point, we're ready for a brief presentation on what this is about and so on. But before I do that, I also want to mention that I believe Director Johnson was also received some communication regarding the center, and he also talked to several people. So before I pass it over to the county to do their presentation, let me see if, Director Johnson, do you have anything you want to add? Because I'm going to hand it over to Peter. And while you're thinking about that, let me just acknowledge that in the audience here today, let me welcome Supervisor Alcorn, who's sitting in the back. Thank you for being here. Director Johnson, do you have anything?
I appreciate that. I would prefer that Peter get to go first, and I'll provide any color commentary as necessary.
Thank you. Mr. Lusk.
Thank you, Your Honor. So as President Quarr pointed out, so this came to us for a review. Anthony has reviewed it. I had an opportunity to meet with Karen Anton and county staff regarding the MOU. We did make one revision as a team last week to make sure that we included that the Reston membership would be included on this new center resident council formerly called the Member Advisory Council. That was, I think, important from our perspective, that members from Reston were included in the new agreement, and that was called out specifically. From an operations perspective, this is not an RA document. We don't operate the center. So for us, this was a review to make sure that our membership was included, and I would invite Karen and others to come to the podium and just say a few words about the agreement.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Karen Demihango, and I represent the county. I work for Neighborhood and Community Services, and I supervise the staff who operate the Kathy Hutchins Community Center. I just want to say thank you for being here tonight and listening to this important action for the county. As you know, there were, there was a couple of letters that I provided, and also all the proposed revisions of the MOA. The MOA was created more than, was signed more than 20 years ago. Throughout the years, we have found, both the council as well as the county staff, I am the staff who actually supports the council, so I'm very well, work very closely with the council members. And I'm very, I want to acknowledge the restrictions that the BAC status creates for the council. As you know, the BAC status, we have to follow the regulations and policies under the Virginia Law FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act. So that provides, that creates a lot of restrictions for the council to include retaining and onboarding membership, the way their meetings has to be conducted, restrictions on fundraising that the resident, the council members at times wants to participate in, have to make sure that if they're participating in a community event, that if there's two or more council members, that that has to be a public meeting, and there's restrictions how many days before that I have, I have to let the community know and so forth. So it just creates a lot of restrictions currently in order for the council members to do their work effectively the way they want to do it. So in addition to that, I also wanted to add that the county as a whole is reviewing all of the BAC status councils, and we, I believe we have more than 200 countywide. So this is just one of them that we are also, is also being reviewed. What would be the easiest way to effectively, you know, support the residents, which they're volunteers, and to make sure that they support the Kathy Hutchins staff, and ensuring that the community is being served the way we are intended to. With that, I will give the floor to Karen Anton, who is our Chair at the council.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a presentation. I'm really here to support Karen, but the reason that I'm here is I'm into my second year as Chair of the Advisory Council. And what, and I will also say that I, if I'm not mistaken, Kathy Hutchins Community Center is the only county community center that has an advisory council. Yeah. So that happened at the beginning, I'm not sure why. So we, if this gets approved tonight, and we certainly hope it will, it will, as Karen alluded to, will just make everything run more efficiently. Right now, we have the Advisory Council, which is under the back umbrella of boards, authorities, and commissions, and therefore subject to a lot of rules and regulations and restrictions. We also have our nonprofit Friends of Southgate, and that is actually, would be the resident council that is referred to in this revised MOA. So what we're having to do right now is have two separate meetings on our meeting night. We have our advisory council, and then anything having to do with financial things, donations, fundraisers, whatever, we have to adjourn the advisory council meeting and open a Friends of Southgate meeting. So it's two separate agendas, two sets of minutes, and it's the same people. The way we're set up, everybody who's on the advisory council is part of Friends of Southgate. So it will just make things run much more efficiently if we can combine everything. It's not going to change at all how the advisory council body supports the center. It will change nothing about, about that. It will just make things more efficient. We currently have, most of our members are RA members, and that will continue. I think what we added to the memorandum when we met recently was RA will have proportional representation, along with center participants and other community members. So, and saying that, I'd welcome board members to become members of Friends of Southgate, and I'm looking at you, Travis Johnson, Hunter's Woods Dogwood District Director especially. Yeah, so, and Ha Brock, who has been one of our partners, is an integral part of what we do in supplying volunteers for our events, and, but she can now become a voting member. So that's another plus. So that's about all I have to say. Is there any questions? We have Supervisor Alcorn here, and we also have virtually Gwen Minton from Supervisor Alcorn's office.
Okay. Mr. Alcorn, would you care to say anything? Do you have a?
No.
Just to put you on the spot here.
I really don't have anything prepared, but really, this is just a great partnership between the county and RA, and really could be a model, I think, going forward. So thank you for your consideration and making this work better.
Thank you. Any, let me hand it over to our guest, Director Johnson.
I did have one comment about the version of the document we've got in front of us that we will be voting on tonight. You know, Karen just mentioned that the agreement was supposed to have proportional representation, which, you know, Supervisor Alcorn and I spoke about on Monday, which I appreciate, which comes out to probably around three members appointed in the previous makeup of the. In the previous makeup of the council, it was about four on a 13-member board. So I think we're still doing pretty well. However, I don't see that language in the version of the document in front of us. So if we're going to vote on that, I'm not sure what that means.
Mr. Lusk.
Are you saying that there's no language in it right now that says... It just talks about community members, RA members, and center participants, I believe, without specifically saying...
Yeah. It currently says, "The Center Resident Council shall elect its own presiding officers and other members to include Reston Association representatives, the community members, and center participants." But it doesn't have the language about proportionality.
So, yes, there's no number at all in the new MOA. If it was, if it's going to continue to be 13, or 7, or 9, we were going to address that in the bylaws of the resident council, which in our other community centers and senior centers, what we look at to, in order to establish exactly, is this going to be a nine-member versus a 13-member resident council? We look at the population, how large the center is. So we don't establish, you know, like a standard number for all of our centers. We just look at specifically that center.
Which is fine, but I just don't see the proportionality, any proportionality language. The... I'm fine without numbers, but I just want to make sure the proportionality is locked in there.
Yes, Director Flasch.
I am assuming that because it specifies Reston Association members, that that means two or more representatives from the Reston Association. Am I correct?
It certainly would be. Yeah. It will be probably... I mean, it would probably be... I mean, we can have as many members as we want. So however many it will be, and I'm sure it will, you know, we would aim for it to be at least nine. So we're talking about at least three RA members.
What I was trying to get at is that because it is plural, then it would imply that there would be at least two Reston Association members.
And most likely more. I mean, as I said, what we currently have now is mostly Reston Association members. We have... There's only, there's only seven members right now. And I believe, with one exception, I believe they're all RA members, the six remaining.
Director Perry, do you have your hand up?
So it's just, because of where we are in the community that we serve, it stands to reason that most of the people who want to be involved in this are going to be RA members.
With that, on section four, the last sentence, which has the language on the type of members, we are happy to add, "And other members to include a proportional representation from the Reston Association." Yeah. You can add that and extend the advice.
Thank you. Director Perry, you have your hand up.
Just a curiosity question. As Ms. Anton, I believe, mentioned, or perhaps, I apologize. The first speaker's name was also Karen. Is that correct? Do I have that? Okay. One of you mentioned that the Kathy Hudson's Community Center at Southgate is the only community center in the county with an advisory council. And of course, Karen, Ms. Anton then pointed out that they also have the nonprofit, which is Friends of Southgate. And I'm just curious, if this is a county-run community center, why do we have a nonprofit tied to it for additional fundraising when I would assume that money is coming out of either small tax District 5 or the county taxes? And I'm not against this either way. I'm just curious for an answer.
Yeah. The center does, you know, receive money from the county. But the reason that the Friends of Southgate was formed is because people wanted to give donations to us. And we could not accept them as the advisory council. So that was why that happened. And why we're continuing to pursue fundraising efforts is so that, you know, we can make... We can, we can support things that maybe are not covered in the county budget. For example, our monthly family dinners. And there are things that are not covered by the county budget that the center receives. Scholar... And we've started, we've started doing scholarships. We've done that for the past two years, and we've sort of reimagined those as enrichment awards. And we would like to be able to increase those amounts year by year. And we can't do that without some fundraising, so.
Director Mappar, if I can just respond quickly. I just want to say, I have been to a number of things at that community center, and they have all been well-received, generally well-attended, some of them over-attended. Some wonderful things during COVID. They offered COVID testing there for individuals. So I just want to say that I do think you all do some very wonderful things at that community center, and I look forward to seeing what the future holds. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Perry. Yes, Director Santa.
It's a 99-year lease, right?
It goes through 2056.
I have a question, just because I'm curious. The in-kind donation of free rent, what would that amount in taxpayer dollars if you had to acquire the land? You don't have to give me an answer now, but I would welcome knowing that number just so that the community knows how much we've been giving back to the county.
Yeah, I'm not sure. And I don't know if anybody was around for the original negotiation, but I know this was a property that was costing Reston Association a fair amount of money to maintain. So it was a win-win at the time. So I'm not sure.
It was, it was a pool.
Yeah.
It was an RA-run pool that was underutilized before it became the community center.
Pete, do you need a motion from us? Or do we need... It seems like we have consensus on Travis's amendment.
Yep. So I'm going to ask Tony to check me on this, but I think we can make a motion in open session to, for the amendment to the language, and we want to talk about the contract in executive session. Correct?
Yes. I would just like to add that I am grateful that this has become, is coming before this board because I'm hoping that it results in more people becoming aware of the center and what goes on there. Thank you for your comments, Director Perry. It is a pretty amazing place with some wonderful things going on there. And I hope, I hope some of you will become involved, maybe on the council or... But please, please come to the events and support the center. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Just one quick sentence, that as a, now a naturalist with the Fairfax County Park Authority, I have participated also in a nature activity at the center, and it was so well-received. And the kids were just knowledgeable and hungry for more information. So I would just echo Director Perry's support for everything that you all do there.
And Mr. Patreen kind of had his hand raised. Can we just confirm he doesn't have something to say?
No, he's done. No, he's done.
Yeah, please.
I would move to table this item until after our executive session. Second.
Should be seconded. All those in favor?
Hold on. For discussion real quick, if we need to confirm at least the amendment per Pete so that we're all on the same page, and then we're operating off that amended contract? I mean, that's what I would... To make sure our guests know kind of where we stand on that. It sounds like we have consensus. If you guys are good with it, then...
I'm seeking legal counsel on both, so.
Okay.
That's why I made the motion.
Fair enough.
We have a motion to table this. Motion was seconded. Any other discussion?
Until after the executive session.
So the motion is to table this until after the executive session, and that was seconded by Director Farrell, if I read that right. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye. We have Director Farrell, Jess Jack, Dodd, Flasch, Santa. Help me out with the counting. That's fine, right? And Director Perry, of course. Those opposed? Director Grabwatch. And those abstaining? So we have five...
Should be 612.
612. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
I couldn't hear what the motion to was.
The motion was to come back to table this until we are done with the executive session, during which we will discuss the details of this, the contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cummins, over to you.
Thank you, President Mappar. As part of my administrative update tonight for the CEO update, one of the things that I have been doing a lot of thinking about and wanted to start working with you all on, there are times where we get a number of questions about the status of either administrative items or work tasks and when they are going to be...
Mr. Cummins, a point of order. Something just came to me, and I want to take advantage of it with all due respect, just to delay you a little bit. I know we discussed this easement issue that came up, and we had a member talk to us about what's happening with cutting trees and so on. And I know Supervisor Alcorn is also short for time. But I wanted to take advantage of the opportunity while he's here, since we talked about this yesterday, to maybe, if he can talk about what we discussed yesterday while he's here, if there's anything that he can offer while he's here, I want to take advantage of this time, if you don't mind.
Sure. I was going to speak to that, too.
What I mean is, let's do that first.
Do that first.
Yeah. So we'll do that first. So we did just find out yesterday, and I had not heard this was happening, but the clearing along the W&amp;O D trail is pretty profound. As we understand the situation, and this is very typical in these types of things where you have bike trails along old easements, the Dominion Power has an easement that runs along the totality of the trail, and they're exercising their property rights under that easement and clearing all the landscape. What has become clear is there has not been a lot, or frankly, any public outreach to let people know what's going on and/or what other options might be within that. So having just found out yesterday, I've alerted our staff to begin a communications effort and to try to work with old Dominion, or sorry, Dominion Power. And for a reason slip there. And I know Supervisor Alcorn and a number of county staff have as well. Town of Vienna was sort of the first that was hit really hard by this. I understand the Town of Vienna had a similar effort. So, I mean, I think we're new at this, but I think if Supervisor Alcorn wants to make a few comments, I know his staff have been very active at this point trying to help.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I know you're short for time, but I wanted to take advantage of this because you've been in the middle of this, if you can.
No, thank you very much. For those of you that are not aware, for the first time, Dominion is choosing to clearcut all vegetation on its easement. And this is basically 44 miles along the W&amp;O D trail, also right through the heart of Reston. In previous years, they have trimmed, they have done selective clearing. But I have met with them multiple times, as has the mayor of the Town of Vienna, Supervisor Paul Chuck from the Providence District, and several members of the General Assembly about this. They have the right to do this. They have the legal right. It is an easement. And we're really hoping that they will come to some reasonable accommodation. But I don't have a lot of confidence that we're going to see anything short of clearcutting. They have a new policy about any vegetation under at least this easement or on this easement. And unfortunately, they're also restricting what can be replanted in the easement. So we're hopeful that we can get some reasonable accommodation so that at a minimum, we can have trees replanted that won't grow to the height causing any problems with their power lines. And we can do something for the habitat, so pollinators, others along there. So this, hopefully, and with Reston Association's attention and support, you know, we can see some sort of plan, really, for long-term maintenance of the trail where we don't have problems like this again, and we can minimize the amount of tree clearing that unfortunately is underway now.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Can I just say, you know, I'm very active in the native plant community and have heard a lot of upset people from Vienna. And, you know, it is true that there are many native woody shrubs that will never grow to the height of the power lines that could easily, and at a relatively low cost, be replanted there. So I certainly hope that public pressure, the public awareness of this will make Dominion not restrict so strictly. Because we do, that is one of the few large stretches, 44 miles. And so the more we can encourage native shrubs there that do support our insects and birds and other wildlife, then the better for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Director Jess Jack.
I would just like to support on behalf of being the South Lakes District Director, where the W&amp;O D trail does go through the South Lakes District and through the neighborhood in the South Lakes District, anything that staff can do to make sure that Dominion knows that, obviously, it's their legal right and their easement, but don't go over that easement even an inch.
Do we know, you've mentioned the length. Do we know the width of that easement? Okay, that's fine. I'm sure there are others who do. Mr. Brit, 100 feet?
That's huge.
That's a lot.
Please, absolutely, yes.
One thing, thank you very much for that comment. That was another point that I made very clearly. You know, sometimes when contractors go out and do jobs, sometimes they don't do it accurately. So notification of the particularly immediate neighbors and coordination with those neighbors in terms of where the line is, where the easement runs, is critical. So hopefully, they will put together... They have it all mapped, but they need to make that available to the general public and also to the immediate neighbors for exactly the reason you're talking about. Because I think it's only fair that people know exactly what's coming down and where to correct those inevitable errors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Over to you, sorry.
That was going to be one of the things. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. So I'll jump back to the other two. So as I have been thinking about some of the questions we get sometimes from individual board members, sometimes as a group, there are a number of administrative items or things that you may have asked for some time ago that you would like status updates on, or have they been completed, or those sorts of things. I don't know if we will use the CEO update for that as an ongoing forum. There may be better things, or this might become a very long list. And each of you has a very different opinion about how much administrative information, you know, you're looking for from our office. But we thought it would be worthwhile to put together a list. So in my absence, I had Peter Lusk put together the list you have in your packet tonight. It addresses things like the AEDs, status of culverts, some grant applications, you know, those sorts of things. I'm actually thinking about a broader reporting mechanism regarding a number of different items. But I would like to continue to work with the board, you know, on what that looks like and really what sorts of things you're looking for and when you want them. You know, it can take some time to put together administrative updates, so I want to make sure that they're, what you're looking for, to hit the expectation. So these are really just informational items for tonight. So I'll probably just stop there on the stuff you see in the packet. But the other thing that's sort of late-breaking, we talked a lot about the election and our support to try to get the word out on the election. The board may recall, you all talked about ideas around how we can get the word out. The idea of door hangers came up. Some of you even volunteered. So we printed a whole bunch of door hangers to try to get the word out on that. And we have some extra stacks over here on the back. Haw Brock is actually spearheading that so we can hit the districts that have historically, you know, not come out as frequently as others, try to get better voter turnout. But we're looking to get as many voters as possible out in the election. So feel free to grab one of those. Happy to coordinate with Haw, you know, or you can get them out. Just let us know where you put them so that we can, you know, as we're doing our work, too, we know where they went. So, you know, with that, tonight... So, you know, with that, tonight's update is really administrative in nature, and that's what I had for you.
Thank you. So on two different items. So one, the action, however you're terming the tracker that you just talked about, I'd really appreciate the opportunity, and if the board is okay with it, to work with you to develop that. There are fairly, I have a fairly strict, not strict, but a very clear vision of what I'd like to see on a fairly regular basis, and I'd like to work with you on whatever it is that you're planning to provide. On the second issue, the door hangers, thank you for this. I know something that I brought up some time ago, and said I would volunteer, and I'd like you to know, I did put my money where my mouth, my feet where my mouth are, and went around Dogwood and did some canvassing for our two candidates. I appreciate these, and, you know, this is for the board. I would really like it if this could be part of our just election process going forward, and we can have a more scheduled process that's integrated into our elections work to make sure that, you know, we can get closer to quorum before we're scraping against the edge like we do so often.
Thank you. Please, go ahead.
And if Travis has his hands on this bag, then we would love to have at least one more, and I don't know, Margaret, your hand is up, for whatever reason. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I still can't walk that much.
Of course, of course, you can't walk well enough to go door-to-door.
But I do appreciate the thought, and certainly, if I were in a different condition, I would contribute. I did want to, Mr. Cummins, you mentioned that people should let Haw know where they're putting their hangers. May I inquire, does Haw have a list of where hangers have already been placed, so that people are not double-dipping on those?
I'm looking back to...
That would be kind of a waste of time and money if we're suggesting that people go out and put them wherever they like and just let Haw know where.
So Director Perry, I'm looking to the back. Director of Communications, Carol O'Donnell, is saying, yes, we do have a list for those, so we can just get that out to the board, and we'll coordinate, make sure we're not, hopefully not duplicatively getting them out there.
Thank you. I just would request that my fellow board members at least glance at it before you go spend too much time in an area that's already been targeted.
Any other questions for our CEO on this topic? Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate everything and everything that you do for ball fields, so my follow-up question is, when is the Hook Road contract going to come for review?
So we have three qualified bids for Hook Road, which is great, because last year we had zero qualified bids for Hook Road. We are currently vetting the most qualified bid to make sure that it does include everything that we need it to include, and we anticipate bringing it March 27th, so that's the next meeting.
And then, because I ask this every quarter, what is happening to the Barton Hill pathway being moved? What has B.DOT said, if anything?
In the first quarter capital update on the 27th, that trail project crosswalk is included in the update.
Good.
Okay. Any, yes, go ahead.
Yeah. I have seen a lot of social media and other information about the importance of voting. As I look at this door hanger, I'm not seeing a mention of the fact that we have to have a quorum to make the election valid. And I think there are people in Reston who are not aware of that, and they think that a vote doesn't matter when there are unopposed candidates. So can I suggest that for future communications, we emphasize that your vote is important, and that if we don't have enough voting members, it costs the association money, because people do want to keep their costs down. So if casting a vote will help them do that, let's encourage them.
Very good. Okay, moving on to your next topic.
Thank you, yes. So this is a continuation of a conversation that we had two meetings ago. At that meeting, you may recall, I gave a fairly in-depth presentation on priorities that I wanted to bring to the board. And so it's taking a step back, there's a resolution in place that contemplates the board having a "planning session," quote-unquote, to think about the highest priorities that the community and the association may want to take up in the next year. During the course of that meeting, there were some additional ideas that were presented by Director Just Chuck. You all had a lengthy conversation about the two sets of ideas. At the end of that meeting, you asked me to take a look, because those, that other list had fairly recently, right before that meeting, you know, been submitted to everyone. You asked that we use the agenda materials that you see almost identical in your packet tonight as the primary starting place, and then asked me to have my C-suite take a look at the additional items. So we've done that over the course of the last couple of weeks, and I thought it would be, I didn't think it would be beneficial to go through the same lengthy presentation that I went through last time, but I do think it would be worthwhile to look at the analysis when we took a look at the bullet points that Director Just Chuck had submitted, all of which are very good ideas, and talk about where they fit and how they nest. Because I think what ended up happening is, as I looked at setting priorities, I imagined large buckets of high-importance topical areas. So, for example, I think this year should be a year that we're really spending time on finance and thinking about the role of the CIP. The variability of the CIP and its role on the assessment is probably one of the most fundamental things that's coming down the pike for us. Now, within that concept, there are a number of different initiatives, and then nesting under those initiatives are a number of work tasks and analysis points and all sorts of things. So the ask ultimately is to affirm the priorities for the association, not to go through an entire work plan that would look like 1.1.1 or 1.1.2, because the anticipation would be, if the board wants to take up looking at the 10-year average as a funding strategy for the CIP, that carries an entire work plan with it, that, you know, is not a series of tasks that you would all be voting on. So when I took a look at Director Just Chuck's bullet points, my initial read the Friday after the meeting was, I think we're doing all of these things already. And so I did a scan of it, and then I had Chief Operating Officer Lusk do a scan of it, and it became apparent to us that a number of these things really were either things that are already nested within one of the priorities that had been identified, meaning we couldn't identify in that list of bullet points a whole new bucket, a new priority that was not already identified. They were tasks that nested within those buckets that are already in the agenda materials. And so what we started to feel like, and I thought to myself, well, I think what we need is better reporting on when these things happen and when they come back to the board, or do they feed into some other decision-making process? So in the intervening couple of weeks, what we did was say, hey, these are the things we think are already done, and then these are the ones that are ongoing, because they are ongoing within that other nest. So it's not that the two lists of things were in conflict, it's really, in my view, that the bullet-pointed list from Director Just Chuck were lists of tasks that are not identified at the policy level, you know, in the board packet. They're not in conflict with each other. So in other words, the path forward, as I took a look at it, is those two things are symbiotic. They're just not typically things that the board would take a, you know, discussion of. And there are a couple of things in there, like resolution cleanup to take out the word "balk." You know, that's part of a larger governance cleanup effort that you have all asked for, for example, right? So, I mean, I'm happy to talk about anything individually, but your task for me was to take a look at the second set and see how it related to the primary set that you wanted to leave in place, and that's how I would view the relationship. I don't see them as in conflict with each other, I really don't. I think one is a list of tasks, and again, all of which are generally fine and good, and we're either working on them or will. So I'll stop there and see if I can answer any other questions for the board.
Director Johnson.
Yeah, Mac, looking at this list, these two lists, I'm left thinking that this isn't really what I asked for when I made the motion last time. My motion was to do an analysis of this list, of Director Just Chuck's list, against the list that you created. And when I think of doing an assessment or doing an analysis of one thing against something else, I'd, I expect to see something where I've got one set of data mapped up against another set of data. What I think I'm seeing here is just kind of one list and then another list that has some language that says that, you know, they're relatively the same. What I would have liked to have seen was this list, the items on this list placed, basically the exercise that you're asking us to do tonight, is what I would have liked to have seen. I would have liked to have seen these items nested under your items in your list, so we could see how well they did or didn't fit. And I don't see that here, and now I'm hearing that that's the expectation for this board to do tonight. And I just feel like, you know, in all of the times that we discuss the length of time that these meetings go, taking care of work that, you know, we asked that be conducted is one of those things that feels like it unnecessarily stretches our time.
I think, I'd just like to comment on one part of that. I don't believe that I understood a couple of things that you mentioned to be the task, but we can talk about what came back tonight. I don't think I understand, understood or understand tonight that the task to be to approve a work plan. I believe the task was to set priorities anticipating that there are future policy conversations. So approving or looking at how a specific task that was listed, there could be several other tasks that are also not listed yet, so I didn't imagine that exercise sort of for that reason. On the broader concept, coming out of that meeting, I admit, I was trying to ask a number of questions about exactly what everybody wanted, and I was definitely, thought I understood that a majority of the board that voted did not want the two lists merged. Now, if I misunderstood that, I'd certainly take the feedback and try to continue to work through stuff.
Can I do a point of order? I didn't want to interrupt you while you were on your roll, but I'd just like to note that we did not review an item that was an item G of the CEO update, which is the standard operating procedure number 119 for common area use requests. So at some point, we either do that now, or when we end this conversation, we have to go back. But I just want to make sure that point of order is noted.
I was waiting for them to finish.
I know, but I just want to make sure.
So how do you want to adjudicate this?
Let's keep going on the current conversation, and then we'll go back.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah. This conversation about the comparison and the analysis. Where do you want to go with this?
I mean, this is up to Mr. Cummins at this point.
Yep.
So, given what we have in front of us, is there any sort of, Mac has included the general topics for board consideration, these are the general policy themes that he anticipates the board of looking at. Do we have concerns with these general themes? Because I do think that the points below are at a pretty substantial granular level, which, again, probably shouldn't be at the board level. So are there bigger buckets that we can talk about for inclusion on this list or removal from this list that we don't want Mac spending time on, or staff in general?
Go ahead.
To be, I'm sorry, to be fair, having looked at the list a number of times, I do think that they are relatively high-level. There are a couple that I would pull from the list, but generally, specifically the ongoing tasks, I would say that they're fairly broad, they're broad enough that I would, if not include them as their own item, I would certainly nest them under existing documents. For instance, Mac brought up rightly the CIP, and the third bullet here is, you know, a fairly important task in the CIP process.
Just to respond to your question, I'd just like to note, for the body to note, that one, two, the third bullet, I removed that from the secretary's update report.
I'm sorry, third bullet in which list?
Page 10.
Okay.
That was actually closed out by Boris Trudel, the secretary.
This is achieve environmental monitoring.
Yep. The staff has already done that, per the motion, and we closed it out. And then I'd also like to note that I don't believe the solid waste and leaf collection is still something that needs to be done. I wasn't here for that board meeting, but my recollection was that this body voted against it, so it should be removed. So I just wanted to provide those two secretary updates for you, to answer your question.
Yeah, no, that's helpful.
Okay. Okay, so there seems to be, what I'm reading here is that a little bit of a mismatch in terms of expectation relative to what was discussed and what is presented here. We have, the way I see things, Director Johnson, we have maybe two options at least. One is we can spend more time right now during this board conversation to go through that line by line, which I don't advocate, because I think that something can be done offline in a different way. The second option is what I just said, and that is perhaps yourself and any other volunteers who have really gone through this, myself, Director Just, just naming names, not volunteering anybody, but taking this offline and really hash it out, so that we come back, we all as a team, both staff and the board, come back with something where both of us have had a chance to kind of say, this is not what I meant, this is what I wanted, it should be this way. And whether it's putting them next to each other, comparing, contrasting, so that would be the other option. I personally favor the second option, because we don't want to spend the whole time going through line by line.
I'd favor the second item as well.
So that's my suggestion to you.
Can I just make sure I am clear on the task we're all trying to solve? Because I think we're talking about different things, I just want to make sure I'm super clear. So the resolution says that the purpose of this discussion is to provide basic direction and set priorities for the coming year, consistent with the goals of the strategic plan. And as I understand the, and by the way, I don't think anybody's done this, so I tried to find a template for this going back at least five years and couldn't find any. But as I understood that term, "basic direction" insinuated or meant that the list of tasks came later. So trying to understand how to be comprehensive in this conversation versus, is this the general direction we want to be going, anticipating that work plans are then created off of that basic direction, is the way I understood it.
So just to clarify, yeah, just to clarify, and you can help me out here, what I'm getting out of this conversation is that there is a little bit of, we're looking at this and we're getting this type of thing. And before we even go into reciting, referring back to resolution, says this, that, and so, we're not even there. We're just talking about, let's just compare and contrast these two things together. And then if that part of it is related to the resolution, we can bring that up. So Director Just, go back, over to you.
I would like to note the objections that I had in feedback I had last meeting, because the document has not really changed, I have the same objections this meeting. I won't go through the list, but if we do end up not finishing this tonight, which would be a shame, because it's supposed to be done in December, and we're now in March, we have literally one more board meeting before the board turns over, and we don't have an annual work plan for the association, yet. So I will note those objections if we take it offline. I would like the subgroup to take those into consideration. And I believe Director Farrell also made his comments last time about things that were on...
were on the list, so I would encourage us to go back to that video and note them. I also believe that the strategic plan objective items are at the same level that the Mac is providing in his work plan items. Those strategic plan objectives are at the same level as the list I provided. And the reason I provided the list in the format that I did, which was to go through each of the goals, is because that's what I thought that we were doing because it was provided to us.
I've done one.
So, sorry, go ahead. All right, so what I am hearing then is that there seems to be general consensus on implementing the inclusion of Jennifer's, the way she has it basically framed, or has stated in previous board members...how, what...I'm doing a poor job of summing this up, but I think at this point, Mac, we need to probably take what Jennifer has provided and truly X-out things that we will not be taking on as an association, remove them completely if they are listed, because that's the only way we can move on. Because right now, we're just stalling with keeping some things open. So your completed list is great, let's remove those completely. For the ones that are ongoing, let's see where they insert into your, into the original plan that you had brought. And then this board would then, I guess, review that completed document hopefully next meeting and be able to provide any guidance if there's something missing that we still believe should be included. I hope that someone sums it up.
I would like to suggest a five-minute recess, just some of the board members need to do some things here.
Second.
So we'll, 8:44, let's reconvene at 7:50. Do I need to take a vote on this?
It's a motion, is it? No?
It's a motion.
As a president, you can't declare a recess.
Okay.
I thought I could declare.
You can declare.
Just the little things that the president can do.
Yay!
You know, the president can't do anything without getting a vote on it. Please. There was an item in the packet about SOP number 119, and Director Santos reminded us that we need to have a quick conversation about that, so either you or Mr. Lusk. Mr. Lusk, would you like to?
Sure.
Please.
So there was a motion a while ago to bring back a straw man policy on common area use requests. We just had one in the last meeting regarding the triathlon. So staff have been sort of doing this in practice. We've been trying to prepare our presenters and our event organizers to discuss how they may give back to the community as part of the revenue that they generate from their event. So this was our first stab at coming back with the common area use request SOP to try to address those revenue concerns that have been brought up previously when we have presenters come to our meetings. So I'm happy to take feedback or any questions regarding the document. I think we do anticipate bringing this back as an agendized item. This was so that we could show that we have done our work regarding the motion that was made, but I do anticipate a larger conversation on a board agenda at some point. Happy to take any questions.
Good.
Thank you for bringing this back to...do it.
You don't have to do it now.
Okay. Sorry, Tony's just too good at his job. On step three, my concern with this is that it's really hard for an organization who currently doesn't track who is an RA member in their event. So while it's not a bad idea, I would just hate this body to, if somebody says 75% of the membership is from RA and anybody here wants to challenge that, we have no way to adjudicate he said, she said. So I don't know what we gain from having this, to be honest with you. To me, this just seems like a burdensome request or a guessing game to an organization applying to be here. And then for step five, I would be curious for you to explain why we need to do estimated revenue from an event as opposed to an organization. Because I would be, I'd like to know whether an organization's overall budget is and what they could possibly contribute to a rest-based charitable organization. And then my final comment for you to respond to is, I guess I kick it over to Tony to even see if this is legal, but is there a way that the trade-off could be for using our facility that those who are RA members get a discount in participating in a race, a lake swim, and that would be the trade-off? So those are my three comments. So two are objections, and one is an idea to see if this body even wants to entertain that. So just, thank you.
With regard to the third of your points, having a different price for RA members than for non-members, that is something we already do for things like the native plant sale, I believe.
Sure.
And so, you know, I can endorse that concept because otherwise I don't know. So, and then people who are wanting to participate in the event identify themselves as RA members. I doubt that we've had any kind of problem of people saying they're RA members when they're not, and we could certainly follow up and check here and there as needed. But otherwise, I don't know how we get a fair assessment on who is a member and who is not.
Yes, go ahead.
I think, oh, thank you.
Just looking at these steps that have been put out, and thank you guys for documenting this process. I want to say that step three and step, step three, four, and five were in response to requests from members of this board when we were going to host the triathlon, I believe. And we were, one of the members of the board asked the approximate number of participants as well as whether or not, what was the estimated revenue for the event? So I think this is staff's way of meeting that request.
Those were, can I, were those motions?
They were not.
So that's okay, I take your feedback under consideration, and I'm providing my feedback to that thought.
Mr. President.
Hold on just one second, John. I was going to ask you if you had your hand up, but just let me get Director Justk first, and I'll come to you. I was gonna ask you if you had your hand up, but just let me get Director Justack first and I'll come to you.
I would support adding to step five, the organization level. I don't think there's any harm to have both the event level and the organization level, but it makes sense. And to Director Dodd's comments, the discounting process or the, the tracking of whether someone's an RA member would not have to be done by RA staff because these are events that other organizations are doing that for. So I think to Director Santa's point, she was questioning whether, not whether RA could provide a discount, but whether we could negotiate a discount through the organization that was collecting the registration fees.
Director Farrell.
To Director Santa's earlier point about how do we know if somebody's an RA member? Zip codes, there's only three of them. And when some registers for one of those three events, for one of those events, they put in their name and their address and their zip code. So it shouldn't be that hard for any organizational asking to use the facility to be able to go back and look. But the point is, is that at least the reports I get is that some of these events are down to 10% or less of participants being RA members. In which case, we're comparable to the PGA. We're running an event, we're allowing somebody else to use our facilities. And the question is, well, why, why are we allowing our facilities to be used fundamentally by people who don't live here? The assets in the facility belong to the members and we ought to be giving the use of those facilities to organizations that serve our members and not the world at large. And as far as, I'm happy to get the event, the organizational net proceeds. But given that it's really talking about the event that they want to use our facilities for, I'm much more interested in the event net proceeds. So that we have a sense of, are we, you know, somebody might suggest that this could be a source of non-assessment revenue. And that's been a campaign for a lot of people in the community for a long time. And we should be examining that potential by getting this information. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Margaret, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, so I, I certainly appreciate everyone's opinions and thoughts here this evening. You know, as far as step three, as is often of note, Director Farrell and I agree, looking at zip codes is certainly one, one way to do it, hoping that, you know, people put in their correct address. As far as number five, I actually had a concern about that in that while I appreciate we would like that information, I do think there are times when that information would not easily or readily be available. For example, if you have, I know in the past, someone here will help me remember, it was Amy's something or other that did the kids' triathlon for many years and that was hosted by the South Lakes High School kids. Does anyone recall Amy's? I forget the full name. I would not want to be overly burdensome on, for example, a group like that that is coming to us and saying, we want to put this forth, we want a fundraiser to raise funds for, I believe it was brain cancer. This, we're, you know, students, yada, yada, yada. And we go, sorry, can't help you because you don't know how much you're going to make. I, I appreciate the thought process behind it, but I want to make sure that these steps don't make it so that people can't come to us or won't come to us because we've become so overburdensome in what we're asking of them.
Good, thank you.
Sorry, I forgot in responding to everyone else's comments to make my own. The one that, the one piece that I had on this is, I think it would be helpful if staff had a way of identifying the, besides the facilities that are being used that we're allowing to be used and closing off during that time to members, is what, what is the level of staff effort, right? And that could, any type of staff effort, whether you guys want to quantify that in estimate dollars or estimate hours or however you want to qualify, quantify that. I think that would help the board in, in determining, you know, how, how much are we, besides our own facilities, giving to the event? And I do like the language, I agree with Director Perry, that we don't want to be overly burdensome, but I do like the language in the standard operating procedures because it says things like staff will request, staff will estimate. And it seems like the procedure isn't going, like if we don't have it, then the staff can just report, it's not available, we can't determine it. Versus closing it off. So as long, as long as we keep language like that, I think that we're, we would be okay in not closing off to, to entities that, that might not have this information.
Thank you. So Mr. Lusk, I think what you're hearing is there are a lot of comments on fine tuning this and so on. And since you said that you plan to do this as an agenda item, is my question to you is, is there any urgency to do anything tonight? Or was this just to tease it out so that we could get the comments and then you have some things to do and you can bring it back?
So this was, providing the draft was in response to the motion that was made. What I, what I think I'm hearing is that the end of March meeting may be somewhat full. So maybe this should come back in April and we can work on getting it on an April agenda.
Does that sound okay?
Can I, can I respond to a comment? So when this body looks at applications, is the understanding that if you don't provide certain information, you're not disqualified? Like we will still allow X person who's requesting to use our facilities? Like for example, if they don't provide estimated revenue? And the staffs.
It still comes to the board.
It still come.
Yes. We can't approve a lake request without coming to the board.
I, I understand that. I just want to make sure that someone's not penalized by board members for not having this information when it comes forward to the board.
I hear that.
So.
I hear you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mappar, I need a motion to defer the annual planning session for, that would be item, whatever item that is.
H.
Item H.
Slipped to the March 27th, 2025 meeting, board meeting.
Second. Second, I think we've had enough discussion on that one, I believe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've got Johnson, Dodd, Flashman, Santa, Perry, Farrell, Justack, myself, opposed. I watch, that's eight, one, motion passes. Thank you. I believe it's your turn, Director Santa.
Yes, I will be quick. I submitted the secretary's report. As you will see, there are 24 motions that are still pending and there are 25 that were closed out. So kudos to us, we're a 50-50 group right now. And the only item I wanted to bring up for consideration was item 15, returning budget surplus to members. Because it says here that it will be scheduled for the March 20, 2025 meeting and there's only one left in the month. So I just wanted to see if this body still wanted to do that at the next board meeting or have we punting this?
I believe there's stuff in our packet tonight that would allow us to make that decision at the next meeting in,
27?
On the, on the 26th meeting because we have our first quarter financial report tonight. So that would give us some time to analyze that data, think about it, ask questions and come back at the next board meeting. So I would be in favor of adding it to the next meeting.
So if you have no questions, that's it for me.
I also would like to thank you for, you've done some formatting changes as your time during secretary. And I think that those have really been helpful changes that you have made. So I just want to encourage you and/or whoever's next to continue along the path of, of what you've established as far as a framework. Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that. Thank you for doing that, yes.
So as I suggested in, when we did item B, I, last meeting, I circulated changes to the biennial budget development timeline. The only change that is not in the draft that I submitted previously was adding to the July 10th Board of Directors Work Session, a review of the pool comments. So that means for staff that although we say that budget suggestions are due on June 1st, we would keep it rolling in order to address Director Farrell's request of being able to at least see the input that's coming regarding the pool season. So if folks are amendable, I would love to move this forward to establish it.
So we make a motion.
Well, I was looking for somebody to validate me.
If that were a motion, I would second it.
That motion has been seconded yet.
I have a question. So the budget calendar that Izzy put together, Director Santa put together, contemplates two board meetings a month. We have not, as of today, there is not a board meeting scheduled in April. We haven't, we didn't approve the board calendar, it's not coming back until April. It could cause, I'm just saying it could cause some confusion.
I am a betting woman that regardless of what that outcome is, because the budget season is so insanely intense, we will have to have meetings on the budget.
I will meet as many times as you'd like, I'm just.
That's the right attitude.
All right, that motion was seconded. Any other discussion?
Who seconded it?
I think Trevor did.
Okay.
She did. Director Dodd did.
Awesome.
Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous of all, thank you. Thank you very much, Director Santa. I believe we are over to you, Mr. Vroom.
Okay, good evening. It's in the packet and I did a video, but I'll give a few highlights on the 2024 financial results and, you know, be happy to take questions both as I go and at the end. So I'll kind of just, you know, try and be relatively brief, but go through some of the highlights here. So we ended the year with a surplus, you know, we sometimes call it, which is a kind of exceeding the operating margin forecast that was in the budget. We exceeded that by 123K versus our forecast that we'd been tracking for several months, projected 107K. So it was very close to what we'd been forecasting, so that's good. Revenues were 122K above budget, primarily due to increased interest. Through negotiating with the banks and trying to be better about managing our cash, keeping it in higher earning accounts, we were able to exceed our budget and last year's interest by quite a bit. Let's see, we had 430K of interest, which was 165K above the budget and 150K above last year, which was pretty good since interest rates in general were coming down. Camps revenue were pretty strong and lake house revenues. You know, overall revenue was up 122K. And expenses were pretty much right on the budget, 1K below budget. As we've talked about in some prior meetings, aquatics ran, you know, above budget. The budget was really only 3% above the axles from 2023. And with the 15 pools open, expanded hours and days and lifeguard pay, you know, that really wasn't enough of a budget. So we did exceed a good bit in aquatics, but came in as we were forecasting. We also had some extra costs from the anti-casino advocacy. But we're able to offset those kind of extra costs with, you know, lower staff primarily. We had fewer full-time employees throughout a good portion of the year. And that gave us some savings that kind of offset those additional costs. So we came in right on budget for expenses. And, you know, capital, we spent a little over 3.5 million for the year versus 4.7 the prior year when we had more pool renovations going on. We had account balances and capital of about 5.3 million at the end of the year. Our carry forward was 874K, which was significantly lower than prior years. And that's a good thing because it means that the capital projects largely were getting completed on time. We had a positive variance in capital with underruns, like we spent less than was projected, partly due to some canceled projects and also projects coming in under budget. But that totaled 482K. And then moving to the balance sheet, we ended the year with, you know, total cash and investments of just under 15 million, of which, you know, 4.3-ish is in the stream and wetlands fund and the cat fund. So, you know, those are quite restricted, about 5.3 in capital, as I mentioned. And in the operating cash area, we had about 5.3 million. But a chunk of that is restricted for deferred revenue, basically revenue we received in December for 2025. So we kind of backed that out because that's really to cover 2025 expenses and our budgeted lease surplus of a little over 500K. So once you back those out, the unrestricted cash was a little over 2 million, which equates to 1.19 months' worth of operating expenses, which if you recall, our operating cash policy kind of dictates we try and maintain between one and two months' worth of operating expenses. So it's kind of in line with that. So really there'd be no action that you would typically take. So I guess those are some of the highlights, but happy to take any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Ed. Any questions for our CFO? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. I really like when you do this report at fiscal first. So.
We will be going over this with fiscal next week.
At fiscal next week, so I'll get into the details then, but I had two, want, two high-level questions. One, I think that you could probably do some research and come back. So on the assessment revenue line, the budget, the budgeted amount is higher than the actual amount.
Correct, by 44K.
By 44,000.
Yep.
That is an anomaly I feel like I've not ever seen at the association because we have, right, an, an account of the number of units that we have. Sometimes there's a couple that might come online, maybe they, they didn't. But I usually actually see that higher because we usually are conservative versus lower than what was, what we're seeing.
We were 17K below budget the prior year as well. So 17K, now 44K. And actually, our treasurer asked me the same question. And, I mean, the reason is we pretty much know the number of units, but what, what we get assessment money for is what we call the equivalent units. And what gets backed out are people who get tax relief. And if you have a, you know, low-priced property, you get a discount as well. So that's where the estimate was slightly off. You know, 44K out of 18 million is a pretty small variance by a percentage basis. But that's basically where we sort of overestimated the equivalent units, which means I guess we underestimated how many people would get tax relief.
The tax relief. Okay, thank you. And then the second one is on the people costs. We have throughout the year, from, from a headcount perspective, I would say on average, been down about 10 staff. At the end of the year, we were down 14 staff. But we've carried that generally over the course of the year. So I would expect that the regular employee budget to actual be a much larger delta than 254. So I was wondering if you could do some analysis there to help us understand why, why that delta is as small, small as it is. It's 254,000, it's not a small, small number, but I, I would have thought that would have been, to be honest, more than double the 254.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll dig into some more details on it and get back to you. But I mean, one just reminder is, you know, I think folks know, but as a reminder, we do assume a vacancy rate of 4.5%. So that's definitely going to be part of that, but I'll, I'll do some additional looking and get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Aquatics expense, am I reading this right? Well, you say it, that it's up, like we overspent, right? So I guess my question is, I don't remember what we did for this year's call. Are we closer to the 2.3 or closer to the 2.7? Like for this.
Do you mean for the 2025 budget?
Yeah.
It's closer to 3 million, it's 2.9 and change? I don't have the number in front of me, but I actually probably do, do here somewhere. But I think it was. of me, but I actually probably do, do hear somewhere. But I think it was.
The thought process, the thought process behind that was, obviously, we missed this year. So we, we accounted for the hire. And then we also were told and instructed by staff that equipment and supplies were going to cost additional this year as well.
Actually, it ended up being 307, 4K. I guess, if you recall, we added some additional days and hours, kind of at the tail end of the budget process, and that actually picked it up to a little over 3 million.
The budgeting issue. Thank you. Memory lapse.
No worries.
And then.
Too young to have that.
Huh? Young people still have memory lapses, too. And then facility rental expenses. It's, we didn't meet the, or we were under. So I was just curious to know what we budgeted for 2025, if you have that number.
We budgeted the same 982K. And if you recall, this has been sort of an ongoing debate, I think, from years before I was here and this year as well. So the budget has been set historically at a straight-line value. The actual cash we paid for rent last year was 992K-ish, and it goes up 3% every year. But kind of the accounting folks, kind of historically, and we did it again this year, have kind of thought that we should budget on a straight-line basis, so the 982K. So there's kind of three numbers for rent. There's the cash we pay, there's the straight-lined amount, and then there's this amount after, it's an accounting rule called ASC 842. And the real cost that you see in accounting speak for rent, it's based on what they call right-of-use asset, ROU asset. And it's kind of the amortization of that asset over time, as well as the implied interest expense. And you have to basically true up the rent for that rate. And similar to what had been done in prior years, we did true that up, you know. And it is what's required. Like, that's what'll be on our Forvis audit, will be that ASC, you know, 842 true-up amount. And in fact, we've already verified that with Forvis, and they agree with the numbers there. But that's the difference.
Thank you for the education.
Yes.
We, we have a motion that was passed to do the straight line, to record our rent as straight line versus have the swings every year that they go up, because then the assessment stays more stable. It's the same kind of concept as the triple R fund. So our rent cost from an assessment standpoint stays stable the entire time we have a lease. So we're not dealing from a board perspective of it going up.
Anything else? Thank you, Ed. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Here comes the bus.
Good. All right. So I actually can't believe it. Tim Butler is on the call, who's with Fairfax County, and I told him we'd be ready at 8:30, and it's 8:25. I can't actually believe that.
Nice.
Great, great job, everyone. So I'll just give you a brief overview. I think we've all seen this now a couple times. So this came to us in December. I would say that we didn't actually start pushing this forward until January. And since then, it's now been to the DRB and now is at the board at the end of March, which I think for us is a sort of remarkable from an expediency standpoint. So this came to us. We met with the county at the bus stop. It is currently a dirt patch, as you saw from the pictures. I went out there with Mike Reynolds and just took a look with county staff, standing there, kind of on the dirt patch. We almost got hit by a bus, so I think some improvements are probably warranted. The county is offering us around 200, or is offering us $200 for around 300 square feet of approximately $11,000 of improvement. We did an environmental check on the site. There are some invasives that can be removed. So from an environmental drainage perspective, there aren't any negatives here. This has been to the DRB. The DRB has approved it. The approval letter was in the packet. So I don't think there's a whole lot of other discussion points. This is a, this is a win for the community here. So I'm happy to take any questions.
I move to approve the bus stop easement as presented at Glade Drive in Dosonia Court. Did I say that right?
Dosinia.
Dosinia. Second.
We've got three seconds.
That's the fastest you've ever had.
Dosinia is the genus name of a clam.
Ah.
In sync with nearby coquina, which is also a clam.
I was going to ask that.
I have a question.
Sure.
When we had, when this had come to us previously, I thought I had read that the finished project is supposed to have a shelter for the bus stop, but our photograph of the proposed new bus stop does not show a shelter.
We had shown some other examples that the county had sent us, but it is not a covered bus stop.
It is not. No shelter.
We made a request that night, too, that, and we can reaffirm our requests, that we prefer to have shelters at our bus stops in Reston.
We can, we can request that it is covered.
So we got three seconds for that motion. That happened very quickly. Any other questions on this? Any discussion? I think we've had enough. All those in favor, the motion, say aye. We've got one, two, three. Okay, that is unanimous. Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Stalusk, doing the next one as well? Lake Anne?
Lake Anne. So in the packet, there was an overview of previous Lake Anne land swaps. If everyone remembers this conversation from the last meeting, staff were to put a presentation together, and I believe the motion was to have assistance from the board to discuss the items. Not being an expert in this field, I might turn to Mr. Flashman to help me talk through some of these items, or members of the Land Use Committee that would also like to discuss.
Sure. This occurred the last time that there was an attempt to redo Lake Anne, and it involved a developer who had a deal with the county in which they would also develop not only Lake Anne itself, but Crescent apartment areas. And Crescent apartment is slightly less than 17 acres. And the developer asked also for a trade in land in order to take the parcel that was indicated in some of the drawings that were provided with the report here, which is behind the U-shaped building in Lake Anne, which is roughly an acre, and a heavily wooded one, and a source of, or place for wildlife and very large trees. And it wanted to use about 85 or 90% of that land to build a two-story garage for 120 cars, which it said were needed in order to accommodate parking for, additional parking for the development that they proposed. It was not parking for Crescent, but for the redevelopment of Lake Anne. And in exchange for that one acre, they proposed three parcels in the Crescent land, which was to be donated to, or given to them for development. One was a small parcel at the entrance to Lake Anne from Baron Cameron on the left-hand side as you enter, and it was a deep ravine. Another was the entrance on the far, other far side to the tunnel undergoing Baron Cameron. So of course, you could not do anything with that. And then there was a long, narrow parcel in the middle of the Crescent land, which had no access to it once it was separated and given to Reston Association. And so they said, those three parcels, the way we will evaluate them is, we will take the total evaluation that is assigned to all of the acreage in Crescent, and then assign a proportional amount of that valuation to the three parcels. And they said, well, there's roughly, there's a rough equivalence between those three parcels valued that way and the valuation that was given to the parcel in Lake Anne, which is Reston's land. At the time, I said, that's absurd. As soon as you separate that land, it's worthless. Nevertheless, the board disagreed and agreed to do the trade. And it was, there was a vote by the board, and it was going to go through, except that the whole project failed. That is, the whole redevelopment fell apart. And the developer announced rather suddenly, sorry, it's over. Goodbye. And the board sometime later passed a resolution notifying the county that the agreement that it had entered into with the county for the trade was dissolved and was no longer going to be observed and ended. And so that's where we are. That's in a short summary of what happened there. There was, I think, also, I think the owner of the Gulf Station, which was to be part of the development, and wanted $5 million for the parcel. And that I didn't think, I don't think considered the possibility that there might be LUST involved. LUST is an acronym for leaking underground storage tank.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Superfund.
Yes.
So, and I don't think anybody had done the studies in order to determine whether there were. However, the cathodic, I don't, this gas station was so old that I don't think that the tanks had any cathodic protection, and they certainly weren't double-walled. And so the likelihood of there being leaking storage tanks was, was not low.
Very good. Yeah. Director Drusak.
I'd like to thank Director Flashman for helping to prepare this for the board, but also doing the education at the Land Use Committee meeting, because there was some discussion at that meeting that staff had brought to us about requests for staff to go over to Lake Anne and start talking about that redevelopment. And so this was really good information. And why it was passed to the board is so that we don't make the same mistake twice, and we understand the history and what it meant to the association. Since then, I believe that it was about wayfinding signs, the, the meeting versus the true revitalization of Lake Anne. But it is on the county's, you know, path, you know, they want to revitalize Lake Anne, and so it will come up. So now we have the history. So I would ask that this history also be included in the orientation or onboarding packet for the new board members that would be coming to us in April, so that we'll have full knowledge of, of it. And now we'll be able to use these documents going forward when it really does come to us.
I'd like to add one other element, which I think is important, and that is, I had suggested to the developer that he ought to consider other spaces, so that combined he could meet his needs. And he proceeded to take a look at 14 other spaces in the environs and look for reasons why it wouldn't work. So he was able to say, none of these worked.
Of course.
At least, that was his position. But he didn't look how it could work. He looked at how it couldn't work.
Mr. President?
Director Farrell. So, so the unspoken part, at least for those who are watching our deliberations here, is Crescent apartment is owned by the county, and the county is trying to tee it up for sale. And so we are probably going to be faced with similar issues in the near future as the county tries to position Crescent apartments for sale to the private sector. So that's why many of us thought it was germane for this history lesson to be revisited. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yeah.
Sorry.
Good.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Mr. Petrin.
Since Brittany does transcript due to AI, I just wanted to note, to track this, not as a motion in our tracker, since we asked this body to do this. So I just wanted to interject my words, so that the AI can pick it up. That's all.
Mr. Petrin.
If I'm not mistaken, there, there, this plan has been bifurcated into two pieces. One is the redevelopment of the historical district, which is Lake Anne Center, and then Crescent, Crescent Park Apartments. I agree with John Farrell that the, the county is going to, wants to offload this, because they've owned it for forever now, seemingly. And they are going to increase the, the density substantially. Some of the issues that have popped up, just so as it becomes more, as it becomes more of a real issue rather than a plan, one of the concerns by the people who live there is, what are you going to do with me? Because they are, as you can imagine, these people, many of the people have lived there for years and decades. So that's one issue. The other issue is, Lake Anne Historical District has all kinds of limitations as to design, design guidelines. And the county in 2022 completed a revitalization study and identified at that time what they considered a cursory assessment, $37 million in, in upkeep that had been, had been deferred. And that is not part of this, of the, of the current discussion involving Crescent.
I believe, if I may, the 37 million was for Larka, not necessarily the entire district, but was the cost that Larka was facing.
If you look at it, it's substantially all of the residential condos, as, as well as Heron House. And Heron House represents 53% of the 37 million.
Okay.
They have, they, they are proceeding, by the way, with doing a number of things in.
So we need to revisit.
And in, already spending money.
Yeah.
They are replacing the elevators, I believe.
Okay.
In Heron House, obviously.
Yeah. Great. Thank you very much.
I move to convene into executive session to consult with legal counsel and to discuss contractual and personnel matters.
Second. Should have been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Into the executive session we go. Thank.
Hello, this is Ed Vroom, RACFO, with the financial update on the 2024 end-of-year results for the board meeting on March 13, 2025. From the dashboard, for the period ending December 31, 2024, the association's cash position remains strong. 2024 revenue was a little over $22.1 million, $122,000 above budget. Assessment revenue was up $1.2 million over 2023, and non-assessment revenue was down $1.3 million, primarily due to a large stream wetland credit received in 2023. Operating expenses were just under $19.5 million, $1,000 under budget. The operating margin, which is revenue minus operating expense, was a little under $2.7 million. This is 123K above the budget. This 123K is what is sometimes referred to as the surplus. We had been forecasting a 107K surplus, so ended the year very close to what we'd been forecasting. Moving to revenues, in total, revenues were up 122K over the budget. Interest was up 165K due to better cash management, working to keep more of our funds in higher earning accounts, and negotiating some better rates from our bank. Interest was up 100
One.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're back into, sorry. Okay, great, so we're finished with our executive session and over to you, Vice President of Guard Watch.
I move that the Reston Association Board of Director certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a contractual nature involving personnel matters or involving consultation with council were discussed or considered by the board during executive session.
Second. That motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is unanimous?
Mr. President, I motion to extend tonight's meeting to 11:10 p.m.
I need a second for that. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 That is unanimous of all. 11:10 it is.
Mr. President, I move to approve Doug Britt for the position of member to the Lake Equity Work Group.
Second. We've got three seconds, so all those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Britt.
Mr. President, I move to approve Jeanette Thompson for the position of member to the Environmental Advisory Committee.
Second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. President, I move that in accordance with the association's policies on purchasing and procurement, to approve the change order to the existing contract with Titan Pool Services Incorporated for construction services related to Autumn Wood Pool resulting in a new not to exceed amount of $232,089.82.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 That is unanimous.
Mr. President, I move that in accordance with the association's policies on purchasing and procurement, to approve the contract with LSI Incorporated for dredging services in the not to exceed amount of $183,556.83.
Second. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 That is unanimous.
Mr. President, I move to defer consideration of the Friends of Southgate and Kathy Hudgens Community Center MOA revisions to a date no later than the end of May 2025.
Second. Motion has been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
I think it's eight one.
Eight one.
Yep, eight one zero.
I have to do that because I sometimes forget.
I think we're ready for new business.
Okay, so at this point, we are ready for new business. Leave.
I move to amend the draft agenda topics to reflect the following changes.
Can you just bear with me?
Oh, yeah.
I want to, while you do that, maybe you can add mine to it as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
During our conversations with Supervisor Alcorn yesterday and the one last month, we have had conversations with him, as you all know about RTCN, and I offered that he could send one of his staff to give us an information brief about where they are, where they're headed, and so on, as a courtesy to them, and I would like to put that on the agenda for next time. This is just to, there's no action required. It's an info meeting similar to what we received from Bill Mailen. I think it would be useful to maintain that relationship by just getting an update on where they're headed. So I'd like to add that to the agenda as well.
Okay. On RTCN or PRC? Because Bill Mailen gave us.
RTCN.
RTCN. So you want them to tell us what their process is or what their plans are?
Where they're, where they stand right now, yeah, what their plan is. There's no discussion about this, that, and so on in terms of what they're going to present to the Land Use Committee to get approval or anything. This is just pure info sharing.
Of the process that they're going to go through?
The process that they're going and what they're, where they're headed.
Okay.
Yeah. Their timeline.
Timeline, got it. Okay.
Thank you.
No, yeah.
I move to amend the draft agenda topics in the following order. Item F will become Reston Town Center North update. Item G will become CEO update. Item H should become the annual work plan. And I would like to make item H be folded into the CEO update, which is item G. So that should all live with the CEO update. And I would like for this body to entertain that item H become the review of the committees, which you were supposed to do in December and have not done. That is per our resolution. Those are my changes.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
That motion has been seconded. Any?
Discussion real quick. So are, are you removing the quarterly updates or they're just being bumped down because they're videos or?
Ah, I really liked the CEO update from this week, so I just thought the quarterly updates could be treated in very short items like what we saw today.
Pete, I would imagine that these are going to be videos, informational videos for the most part, and then if there are questions?
And, and they're all done.
And they're all done?
Already.
Okay.
Okay, fine, then we'll keep.
Can I make a request for the agenda? Is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have Resolution Seven on purchasing and procurement that we're bringing to fiscal committee that they're going to see again this Wednesday. It would be great if the board could see that at the end of March.
So to repeat all the changes, F is RTC, RTC North. G is now CEO update. H is the annual work plan. I is RA interaction with developers in Reston. J is departmental quarterly updates. K is now Resolution Seven. And what comes after K? What letter? Whatever letter after that is the.
L.
L is the review of the committees per our resolution.
Did you capture that?
I was committing.
Yes.
So. So the Deeds Subcommittee update is gone?
Do, is it vital? Do we need to have it next board meeting? The agenda has, there are things from, that are resolutions that need to be reviewed that we haven't done, and I feel like the Deeds Subcommittee could wait. But if we feel, if you feel strongly, that's fine.
The calendar, I mean, we're already behind on the calendar, so I, I feel like it's more pertinent because we're already behind on the calendar. And the Deeds Subcommittee should have a recommendation, so I don't, I don't see it being a long discussion.
Okay, that's fine.
I also have that we need to deter your item 15 on your secretary's list. I also have that we need to deter your item 15 on your secretaries list.
Oh, so we do...
Returning, sorry, I, I tried to text you while we were sitting here. Return surplus to members.
Okay.
And pick a board calendar date for April.
Yep. So those come after L, those two other items.
M and N.
Yep.
Too late for this.
M and N, and then O is an executive session.
S.
Yes.
And P is new business.
Just get the whole alphabet in there.
We'll just push it down and...
And I would like the RTCN one to say RTCN process update, please.
And Q is adjourned. Let's make sure we get every letter hit.
Does it really, does it, is it really important for us to wordsmith and box this so that they don't go besides, if they go outside of their process, that we should stop them and so on? Come on, guys, let's be real here.
We made a decision as a board.
We're, we're trying to have fun.
Jeez.
So Brittany, did you capture, I, I, because I didn't. Please.
So I've got F is now the RTCN update.
Yep.
G is now the CEO update.
Yep.
H is now the annual work plan.
Yep.
I is RA interaction with developers.
Yep.
J is departmental updates, quarterly updates.
Yep.
K is Resolution Seven.
Mm-hmm.
L is the committees.
Yep.
M is the return surplus to members, and then after that, it's the calendar date for April, board calendar, select a selection, whatever you guys want to call it, and after that, executive session, the new business, then adjourn. Sound right?
Did you, did we, did you mention the deed update?
Oh, where is that going? I didn't remember where that was going.
That's the old, that's the current.
I thought that was N.
Was it? Okay.
I thought...
Right after...
Well, we have board calendar and return surplus. Deed update was on I, so...
I'm sorry.
I would, I would move the deed subcommittee update to above K.
Above Resolution Seven?
Yes. Because it was already on our agenda.
Okay.
And then everything else goes down a letter.
Okay.
I, I, I'll just say one thing. I, if, these are video presentations, and we may not even have questions for staff, to keep them through multiple agenda items may not be best practice. A thought would be to put the department updates above the CEO update and allow staff to be dismissed.
I like that.
If there's, if, if they don't have anything, so I apologize, Brittany, for that, that adjustment, but it would just move departmental updates just above the CEO update.
So that would become the new G, and then everything else moves down.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, so the motion is on the table. Was it seconded?
Yes, I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 That is unanimous, and I believe that concludes our agenda, and at 11:06, having no other business before, the meeting is adjourned.